You.
What happened?
Me, Zambia.
Action!
Action, action!
You.
Action!
You. Your Excellency, Engineer Ekejodu Rebatu, the Deputy Governor of Abia State, the distinguished Senator Naren Tmogocha, former senator that represented the Abia Central constituencies, members of the National Assembly, both those that are serving and those that are not serving. If you permit me, I will use Honorable Honore Chief Allozier, the member representing the good people of Fuguna Bog, Osissiaman and Ogingwa Federal constituency, to reach out to all of you. I want to also specially reach out to Honorable Chief Mobi. Deputy CK, former member of Aba North and South Federal constituencies, who has been warmly welcomed here moments ago. And I'd like to use him to reach all the people that joined us this afternoon. The Speaker, Abia State House of Assembly, right Honorable Emmanuel Emmero. Let me use Honorable Emmanuel Emmero to reach other House of Assembly members, those that are serving and those that are not serving. The National Vice Chairman, Southeast Labor Party of Nigeria, Honorable CK Agara. Permit me to use you to reach out to other party functionaries that are here, including the African State Chairman, Local Government Chairman and Local Government A- School, State Working Committee, State A- School, One A- School and Working Committee. Members of Labor Party, wherever you are and wherever you come from, you are specially recognized this afternoon. The Chief for Staff, the governor Pastor Kevin Adjabah. Here she, if you don't mind, I will use you to reach other government appointees that are here. And that would include commissioners, special advisors, senior special assistants, special assistants, heads of parasitars and agencies, including the General Manager, Greater Aba Development Authority, who is here with us. Mayors of the six local governments that are here. And if you permit me, I'll use Chief Uche Wobu, who is the Mayor of Abasa, to reach all of you. I would also use him to reach the deputy mayors and the councillors that are here with us. Other statesmen and stakeholders from the Abia South Senatorial District that are here with us. Chairman of the Abia State Council of Traditional Rulers, Your Majesty, here's a line of the top bar. Let me use you to reach your deputies that are all here and also other traditional rulers that are here. Let me recognize our anointed men and women of God that are here and there are lots of them. They are all welcome. A representative of the Hausa community that spoke so eloquently. I want to recognize you and welcome you and all Hausa people, Yoruba people, Cross River, Abai Bong, wherever you come from. You must have known by now that this administration does not discriminate. Once you live in Abia, you are an Abia. Very recently invited guests, gentlemen of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Let me stand by thanking God for today, for being alive. In another 24 hours or less than it, we will be celebrating one year in office. And this one year is 266 days because this year is the leap year. It is the Lord's going and it is marvelous in outside. It started like a joke, but today we are one year. We want to give all the majesty and authority to the Creator of the universe, who has empowered us to serve you, our people. It has not been an easy one year, but there was nothing we saw that we did not expect. Maybe the death of the whole was not what we expected. We expected that people who we are giving authorities should have a little conscience. But then what we saw showed clearly that conscience did have nothing to do with leadership or courage. But the good news is that it did not beat us. We were not discouraged. We folded our sleeves. Now we knew that government is a continuum. Wherever you pick up from, you run with it. And that is why as soon as we got sworn in, the first place we came to was Aba. Aba had some signature of heaps of refuse everywhere. Another signature was foul smell on the very face. Of course, the third signature was very bad and impassable roofs. So we say our Aba cannot collapse under our watch. I've said it time and time without number. That's one of the reasons I offered myself and made the sacrifice to come and run for God's worship. Because at the time, 10 years ago, when I resigned my role in the banking industry, it was not a very usual thing for somebody who was presiding over a thriving bank to resign and come into an uncertain territory to come and fight. But one of the reasons I took that position was Aba. You may not know it, but I was born in this town. I was born in Aba. I stood here. My secondary school was Uba High School. So for nine years that I was here, in secondary school between 1977 and 1982, not too long after the Second World War, that this town was a town that people respected. For the town that you come with, with quality bank and live with a car. There were all sorts of opportunities for people who didn't have anything and anybody. All you needed was hard work, sincerity, energy. They got given skills. And then we spent and watched. Several decades down the line, Aba disappeared. And we said, never we will bring Aba back. Like I have said here, a few months ago, all what you see today are dress rehearsals. We have just started. We have a lot of programs and we are only sending out one after the other. By the time we are done with this town, you will never recover. Moments ago, we flew. A transportation terminal. Those who were there or those who are developing, they don't understand what we are trying to do. Simply stated, what we are trying to do is to take away all these banks. Whether they are private or public banks, we are taking them away. And there are seventy of them in Aba alone. We are putting all of them around that Aba mosque. If you have time, go there and see the picture of what that terminal would look like. Those who have been to the UK, if you know Paddington train station, that is an example of what we are to produce. We are used to fight, so if you fight, we'll fight you back. If you don't find it, it will convince you. But the most important thing is that it affects our Aba people. You know, people are always resistant to change. So we are used to throwing that inside the gutter. We have warned everyone. And as we finish at this celebration for anniversary, we are going to bring out the big stick. Because if we live with you and you don't listen, we will use the big stick. We are not afraid to use the big stick. But we don't want to deny to me as a last resort. So as we are cleaning up the environment, making everywhere a dish, somebody was saying, and I believe it was a joke, that anytime he came from somewhere else to Aba, we would be sleeping in the box. Anytime his smell changes to foul smell, he woke up and knew that he was in Aba. But the last time he was found before he realized he had passed Aba and he found himself in Potashok because the bus man had disappeared. We have commissioned in this senatorial zone thirteen roofs as of last week, roofs that we rehabilitated. After now, we are headed to commission the University Road, Poly Road and Green Avenue. And that will bring the number to sixteen. We will go from there. We have disinfected virtually every tunnel and drainage that have not been flushed in more than 10 years. And that is why when it rains now, it may be difficult for the flooding that used to happen to Aba region. We have fixed the Abia State University Teaching Hospital and regained their lost accreditation as of December last year. The accreditation was lost for three years from 2020, 2021, 2022. But as of December 2023, the accreditation of our university teaching hospital was restored by the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria. Like I announced, we are starting from the month of June to complete and expand what our forefathers started called an Inba Hotel. It is going to be a five-star hotel managed by an international hotel chain. The rooms are going to be expanded from the present, I believe, 120 or 130 to about 255 rooms. At the back of it, we are also going to construct a modern international conference center. And across the Aba River, we are constructing a modern park where our people will go and celebrate and enjoy their life. So if you are anywhere and you are thinking on where to relocate to, I have an answer for you. The place to relocate to is. I am sure that you have followed the speed of work at Potashok Road. We are confident that by the end of this year. We are also seeing the speed of work at Cemetery Road Phase 3. In the next few weeks, we will commission a new Obumma Road. We are not stopping there. We are rebuilding our schools. Because I went to school here and I'm going. And people that went to school here in the next few years will also become like me, very better than me. By the time we are done with the schools, minimum standards will be maintained. When you see a two in Abia, you will recognize it. Ladies and mayors for speaking and giving all their records. You can see that all of them have done well. They are just sitting on scope. When, like the speaker said, when I came up with the idea that our mayors will be people who are not hungry, who are not looking to starve money. Some people didn't understand what we meant at that time. I'm sure all of them understand now. Because by the time we are through with this pitch, we are going to be commissioning projects that have been done here. If you knew this place very well, it was like Aba also. But today, it's. In the three senatorial zones, you can take advantage of it. Honorable Umanazo talked about the Inner Galaxy Company, the Chinese company in Opa West. We are already doing something about it. And as that report unfolded, I called the Commissioner of Police and gave him a marching order to arrest the Chinese that were involved. I am sure that those that come from Opa West will tell you that the man is in detention. So he has detained. We do not tolerate indiscriminate of any kind. We do not discriminate that anybody that breaks the law, the law will hatch up with him. We will subsequently investigate to be sure that this company and any other company that is operating in Abia State is operating according to the law. Uche Wobu, thank you very much for everything that you displayed. We can see that you are doing digital with the government. Keep up the good job. The Hausa community also spoke about skill deposition. And my response goes the same way with the Opa West Mayor, Opa East Mayor. We already have set up skill apposition center. And the skills that are interest to us are skills to do with digital technology. Because that's the way the world is going today. Ede John, with Aba. Thank you very much for having something to serve at the Mayor of Aba. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the good job you are doing. You are so vested in Abia State and in Aba. You were born here. You are son of the Lord. We are glad that we appointed you and we are more glad that you are accepted to serve. Your Majesties, the traditional rulers, I want to thank you for the kind words. Thank you for the support. Thank you for the gift that you gave me, including the gift of God bless. He says that you use it to clear the bush. I will ensure that I do that. But if anybody stands in the bush, whatever happens to the bush will happen to him. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to once again thank you for this opportunity to share ideas with you. This is your government. And anytime, any day, if you have ideas, feel free to share those ideas with us. Can also see the youth corps members in the attendance. I want to thank you. I hope you have a happy and good time in Abia State. And if you do have any issues, my Commissioner for Youth and Sports is empowered to give you as much support as possible. His name is Honorable Wobulob and Aba, and he's an Aba boy too. So you should feel free to relate with him. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, ladies, thank you once again for listening to me. Thank you for coming to this town meeting. Thank you for being part of this celebration of our one year in office. We will see you again very soon. And this is a business, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Now I would like to invite those who will join me to join the mayor. to join the Mayor of Abasa, Honorable Uche Wobu, to coordinate and commission about six or seven projects that we have listed here. We will do that in just five minutes. And from there, we will proceed to College Road, University Road and Green Avenue to commission the three roads this year. Thank you very much, girl, please.
Thank you very much, please. Alright, thank you very much. His Excellency will therefore proceed to citing the tractor purchased by the Abasal's local government area. And immediately after that, commission the newly retrofitted and reconstructed Abasal Local Government Complex by the Mayor, Chief Uche Wobu. Congratulations once again, thank you.
Looks right here in Aba, the individuals are very friendly. Foreign Minister of Justice of Uganda, Reverend Ndombele Mwana, Christie Esir, Chief of our Zeburaya, Jigbe.
Alright, the DJ, please be on standby. National anthem, please, national anthem, and then we proceed for the commissioning, thank you.